I now call to order the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees Meeting, time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the planet of the United States of America and to the Republic of which ascends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wigan?
Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Uh, trustee Teets?
Here.
Trustee Moyer?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? All right, any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? All right, we're gonna start off with a presentation. Now, this is gonna be on the draft fiscal year, um, twenty twenty six budget for the town of Wellington, and the presentation will be with Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator, Mr. Nick Redavid, the Town Director and Town Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustee Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. As required by state statute, I'm pleased to present to you the Town of Wellington twenty twenty six budget for your consideration. Before we begin, I want to extend my sincere appreciation to staff, all of those back there, especially Town Administrator Kelly Hodling, Finance Director Nick Reedavid, and Controller Patty Lundey for their tireless efforts and attention to detail throughout this process. Mr. Reedavid will provide a high-level overview of the key components and nuances within this budget, but before he does, I'd like to highlight a few important points. You'll notice several refinements and updates throughout the document, many of which are highlighted in yellow. These reflect our continued commitment to delivering the level of service our residents expect, while carefully balancing the revenues needed to sustain those services. There were no changes to the board's priority initiatives, Home Rule, the hardship utility grant, Cleveland Avenue Business Support, and the Board Discretionary Fund, all of which remain funded as previously presented. Additionally, the L C S O contract remains as submitted with no additional officers included at this time. With that, I will now turn it over to Mr. Reedavid to review the specifics of the draft twenty twenty six budget.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Trustees, and thank you for the introduction, Ms. Garcia. Tonight's staff presents to you the draft of the complete financial budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six for the town of Wellington. Included in the meeting packet are updated operational and capital expenditure requests, projected revenues, estimated fund balances, and an overview of the budget development process that has been ongoing for the past several months. We'll review the updated requested expenditures from previous meetings, provide a summary of changes in revenue year over year, and discuss the impact of expenditure and revenues on the fund balance. Department leadership is present to hear board feedback, input, and guidance, as well as public comment, and will be available should there be any questions following the presentation. The budget development process for fiscal year twenty twenty six began with the Board of Trustees twenty twenty six Budget Priorities Work Session on May twentieth. Taking into consideration the priorities, as well as the strategic plan that was adopted by the board in August of twenty twenty four, town staff kicked off their budget development process in June and has compiled programs and services, as well as associated costs, to meet the needs of the residents of Wellington. The initial operational expenditure requests were presented to the board on September sixteenth. At that time, operational expenditure totaled over seventeen and a half million dollars, representing a decrease of four point three percent from the current fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. In the time since that meeting, the year-over-year decrease has increased to nine percent across all funds as an additional eight hundred sixty thousand dollars in reductions has taken place as staff has worked to refine budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty six. It has also been determined it is in the best interest of the town's financials to institute a temporary hiring freeze for three vacant positions, excuse me, two in Public Works Administration of the General Fund and the Parks and Rec- Parks and Recreation Position in the Park Fund that was recently approved. Funding for these positions has been removed and will be reassessed later in twenty twenty six and brought back to the board with a budget amendment if appropriate. In the General Fund, where operation expenditures requested have decreased by seven point one percent since originally presented, funding for Placer A I was removed at the direction of the board, and community survey and compensation study timelines have been adjusted, resulting in both taking place in twenty twenty seven. Significant changes also took place in the Water Fund with an adjustment of the projected N P I C lease payment due to an interest rate reduction, in the Sewer Fund as leadership and staff completed an operations assessment and expense overhaul, and in the Park Fund by reducing several, by reducing services in tree and lawn maintenance, amongst other areas. Many other changes across nearly all departments and funds have been made as represented by the yellow highlighted cells of the Draft Budget Expenditure Section of the Packet. Capital improvement projects were presented to the board on September thirtieth and have been updated significantly in the past two weeks as well. Requested expenditures in the General Fund have been reduced by eight hundred fifty thousand by delaying the funding for the Public Works and Parks Administration Facility, the Cemetery Mapping Project, and the Strategic Property and Grant Acquisition Fund. Projects in the Water Fund have been adjusted by a million dollars by splitting the water treatment plant, excuse me, water treatment facilities, administration, and lab building over two years, and delaying the purchase of a skid steer to twenty twenty seven. And requested expenditures for capital projects in the Sewer Fund have been reduced by over two hundred thousand dollars by delaying a roof replacement project to twenty twenty seven. In meeting the town code requirement to present the annual budget no later than the first meeting of October each year, the Finance Department, with the support of several leaders across the organization, have been reviewing projected revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty six. While several key revenue sources are projected to increase, such as property taxes due to increased property volume, value in the community, and sales tax as retail sales in Wellington continue to grow by eight percent year over year to date, overall revenue in the General Fund is projected to decrease by four point four percent, not including transfers or grants. A significant reduction in building permits, anticipated to be thirty eight residential permits in twenty twenty six, has significantly impacted inspection fees, use tax, and impact fee revenue across all funds. Overall, not including grants or loans received, revenues across all funds is projected to be over eighteen percent lower. This information was key for staff in reviewing requested expenditures and capital improvement projects, as well as calculating estimated fund balances for the town. One other important note about revenue projections to share is that capital investment, impact fee, and user fees, also known as water and sewer sales in the enterprise funds, have been projected using current water, wastewater, and stormwater fees, impact fees, and capital investment fees in the approved twenty twenty five fee schedules. Due to the timeline of the municipal utilities' rate and fee study currently taking place, in order to provide conservative projections in alignment with best budgeting practices, the current rates are being utilized for revenue projections across the water, sewer, and drainage funds. There is a board work session scheduled for December sixteenth to discuss the rate and fee study, which is scheduled for consideration early next year. This also allows the town to make all rate and fee changes effective in April, meaning that residents will only see billing statement changes once during the calendar year, rather than on January and April billing statements. If appropriate, following a review of projected revenue due to potential changes in the fee schedule, budget amendments may be brought forward for board consideration next year for additional appropriations. Finally, with the updated operational and capital improvement project expenditure requests and the projected revenue, the estimated fund balance for fiscal year twenty twenty six has been provided. Two important items to share about the beginning fund balance is that this was calculated using the ending fund balances and net positions from the audited financial statements for fiscal year twenty twenty three, the expenditures and revenues currently in audit review with Hinkle and Company for fiscal year twenty twenty four, and the estimated end-of-year expenditures and revenues outlined in the previous two sections discussed. This is the most complete and accurate estimated fund balance that has been presented to the board in recent years. And as a result, the estimated fund balance included in the twenty twenty five budget of twenty six point one million is actually estimated to be thirty eight point four million. As a quick aside, I have been in contact with our auditor, Mr. Hinkle, today, who let me know his firm is currently working to meet the October fifteenth audit deadline for special district clients, and that testing will resume on the town's twenty twenty four audit later this week. It should be pointed out on the twenty twenty six estimated fund balance that the net operations in the General Fund, Sewer Fund, and Park Fund does currently exceed revenues. Town Administrator Garcia discussed some items for board consideration regarding the General Fund and the municipal utilities' rate and fee study is reviewing the financial plan for the Sewer Fund. Staff is also currently working with a municipal, with municipal advisor Troy Bernberg with Northland Public Finance on a five-year revenue forecast for the General Fund and will bring that to the board in the coming months. Overall, including capital project expenditures, the estimated fund balance does include nine million dollars in fund balance spending for an estimated ending fund balance of twenty nine point three million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty six. To put this in perspective, as previously stated, the estimated ending fund balance in the twenty twenty five budget adopted last year was twenty six point one million dollars. Additionally, all funds are currently meeting the operating expenditure reserve requirements, and including all projected revenues and fund balances, this is a balanced budget per the town's current and proposed financial policies. Thank you for your time tonight and for your engagement with the budget development process. Input and feedback and direction from the board and public comment are an integral part of the process. The final draft of the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget, including the accompanying supplemental information for the full budget book, is scheduled for consideration on November eighteenth, and staff will continue to work diligently to refine the budget in the meantime. We did not receive any questions in advance, however, department leadership is present should there be any questions. And if we're unable to answer those questions tonight, we'll prompt, we will promptly respond to the board via email. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any questions from the board on this item? No. Nothing, okay. Um, I will now open this up for public comment. All right, no public comment. All right, next, on to, um, actual public comment for non-agenda items. Those wishing to speak will be given three minutes. State your name at the podium for the record. Okay. Onto the consent agenda. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title of the consent agenda items?
September twenty third, twenty twenty five meeting minutes, resolution number forty dash twenty twenty five, Resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, canceling regular meetings.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. All right, on to action. And Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E one?
C S U Department of Journalism and Media Communication.
Thank you, and then Jenny Fisher will present on this item.
I do have a present. Thank you. Um, hi, I'm Jenny Fisher. I am an instructor in the Department of Journalism and Media Communication at C S U, and I am here on behalf of a group of researchers, uh, myself, Ashley Anderson, and David Wolfgang, also professors in the Journalism Department, and Martine Krakuson, who is a professor in the Communications Department. Um, I will give a brief overview of what we've been up to for the past year. We have been conducting research on, um, essentially the viability of a local media outlet in the town of Wellington. Um, the reason for... Sorry about that. Okay, so, um, the reason for our selection of the town of Wellington for this research and kind of the impetus for this project is because Wellington is technically a news desert. That means that you do not have a local news resource. Um, you depend on, uh, local resources like the Colorado and the North Forty News, which have overlapping coverage, but have kind of diminished their coverage of the town of Wellington over recent years. And so our goal was through, um, community engagement and, um, looking around at, um, other news deserts in the state of Colorado, which we have a handful primarily in the southeastern corner of the state, um, just kind of getting a little bit of context for how, um, news deserts act and, and how we can best serve the town of Wellington by potentially developing a, um, local media outlet. Um... So, wit, for this local news source, our goal would be to, um, cover the town as any local media outlet would. This means information about local government, community events, public safety, K through twelve, um, school happenings, and other relevant topics. Um, as I mentioned, you know, without that dedicated coverage, that is something that is missing from the community. Um, through, um... Sorry about that. I'm a little nervous. Um, okay, so, elements that we are considering, as I said, community engagement has been a primary source of our information. We held, we, uh, conducted a survey. We got sixty one respondents to that survey, survey. We also held two in-person meetings. Uh, we got nine, um, very enthusiastic, um, attendees to those meetings who came ready to talk. Um, so we learned a lot about the, the media consumption of the community. Essentially, what you're seeing, what you're not seeing, and what you'd like to see is, is what we were really looking and gathering information for. Um, we also want to figure out financial support for this new media outlet. Uh, the Department of Journalism and Rocky Mountain Student Media Corp. do have a memorandum of, of understanding specifically for this project. Essentially, we want to partner to offer a way to, um, give students the opportunity to learn about rural journalism, to, to report directly on Wellington while using student media's strong backbone and its long history in the media business to support the, the business side of things, essentially to enable things like ad sales and, you know, budgeting, uh, accounting, those kinds of nuts and bolts things that we'll need. Um, we also considered the importance and the impact of good local news. Um, a lot of research was done to that end, and we found that in the end, having a local media outlet is financially supportive, financially beneficial to any, any town. And then further the benefits to the community, essentially giving kind of a digital third space in which people can engage with one another and discuss, um, shared community issues, which is currently missing. Essentially, you don't have an opinion page. You know, you have, um, very active Facebook pages that are community-based, and so it would essentially be a, a managed, a more moderated version of, um, those kinds of things. Um, so the, the specific benefits, um, include, uh, finding that was made by, by Bloomberg starting in about two thousand nine that the cost of government essentially goes up in cities and towns that do not have a local media outlet, and the cost of municipal bonds goes up as much as eleven basis points. So essentially, it is financially beneficial for any town to have its own media outlet. I have some in this deck, which I will gladly share with all of you. Um, a handful of shared, uh, selected survey results. Um, the results essentially indicate that not only are the residents of Wellington civically engaged, they seek news, they don't shy away from looking at the news, but they would use a local news source if they had access to it. Um, every, every person that we talked to in person, um, we came to the, uh, the Saint Patrick's Day event and distributed some, some surveys there. And while we didn't get any, or well, we didn't get too many, I think we got like six responses to the survey on that day. We had a lot of conversation with folks who were very interested in what we were doing. And, um, David Wolfgang and myself were here on that day. Um, and there was just a lot of energy surrounding it, and we saw that further in the surveys results that we did get, all those sixty one, and then also in the in-person, uh, meetings that we had. And so, both anecdotally and through our, our engagement research, we did see in a level of excitement and interest in a local media outlet. Um... So this, this result indicates that, um, the, the residents who responded absolutely actively accessed the news. You can see that rarely is at about seven percent, and the, the remainder do seek it out. Um, try to avoid the news. It's, it's kind of, you know, middle across the board, but you know, the, the good indication is that only nineteen percent, thereabouts, are often or always trying to avoid the news. And then finally, they, you know, they want to learn more about the community and its issues, and that is, um, you know, agree and strongly agree, um, is at about eighty-two percent. So there's a lot of interest that, um, to be had here. Um, what I'm asking for with, with this grant proposal is essentially to continue the work that we will finish on, um, December thirty first of this year. Um, the work that we've done so far, you know, the way that it's gone, you know, we, we've had the survey, we've had the in-person meetings. I have developed with, um, a web development team, a prototype of a potential newspaper that, um, incorporates, um, the thoughts that we've gotten, um, the needs that have been voiced by the people that we've met, um, primarily with in-person, and then also from, um, the Citizen Advisory Board. And so we want to keep that going, and we want to keep it going in a meaningful way that will enable us to create kind of a jumping-off point for eventually launching, um, this media outlet. So we don't, we don't want to stall out essentially. Um, so the first piece is developing a communications plan. Um, this plan will work to inform, uh, residents of this potential outlet in the first place, and then also work to further gather feedback on, um, the, the content strategy and other work that we have in progress. Um, to be completely candid, I just learned last week that we are eligible for a grant, the same grant that got us this far, um, for next year. And so while I don't have a plan, a specific plan in place for that grant, we are going to apply. We really hope that we get it, and if we do, the plan is not to redouble this work, but to have the, the work that we're, we plan to do with this grant kind of catapult and, you know, launch that, that work even further. Um, so like I said, no, no proposal is in the works just yet, but we are thinking in that way. Um, we also want to, um, continue to gather information about local topics to cover. That means we want to keep talking to folks in Wellington. We want to keep getting community feedback and keep asking about what people want to hear, engage residents in conversations about the shared issues that they want to hear about, what they want to know about, and how. That's the biggest question that we're going to answer. Um, we also, with this grant money, want to develop a business plan. This is the part where Rocky Mountain Student Media comes into play and that, where that partnership really begins to, to take shape. Um, we want to establish editorial control for the media outlet since it will be this partnership between these two entities. Um, and we also want to establish, um, some, some market research. We want to understand the Wellington market a little bit better. We want to seek out, um, ways to fund the pro, the project, both with ad sales, with additional grant funding, and, you know, maybe with other strategic partnerships that we can leverage. We just, we want time and we want resources to look for those things in a concerted way. Um, and finally, we want to continue work on the prototype. Right now, the, the web developers are kind of on pause. Um, the Citizen Advisory Board gave us some really good feedback. They have enacted that feedback, and I think that that, that prototype has been pushed just about as far as it can be um, without further work. And so our goal is to keep them going and keep them building that out um, to a point where, you know, like I said, everything wants to build to that launch. So if we get fully funded, if we get a plan in place, we can do that. We can essentially jump if we, if we get the funding and, and figure out a way to make it financially feasible. Um, we will continue to engage the Citizen Advisory Board to that end. Keep at, keep showing them the prototype, keep meeting and asking them questions about what they want to see, what they like, what they don't like, and then eventually through the communication plan that is developed first, um, release it to the public in some way to invite that line of commentary. Um, so this is the prototype. This is, you know, just a screenshot, but, um, I do have links to it if you would like to see it on your own.
And we will be placing this presentation in the packet tomorrow, so it'll be available to the public as well.
Thank you. And then there is a link to this presentation as well.
Thank you very much. Um, any questions from the board on this? Trustee Teets?
Questions, comments? Do you want them both or questions first?
Questions first.
Okay, I get nothing.
Thank you.
I'm curious, is your format going to be all on web-based, whether it be print editions and so forth?
Web is where we're starting for financial reasons. Um, the, the cost of print is, is very high, but it's not lost on us that there is still a desire for print and that not everyone frankly can get good internet that enables the web product to work. So we're not ruling print out by any stretch of anyone's imagination. We are just, we're starting with the web project, our, a product. We are also considering ways to engage in social media, um, both existing, uh, pages and ones that would be developed specifically for the bulletin.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Got a couple of questions.
Mike?
You had made mention that the cost of government goes up when you're, when you don't have a news media. Why?
That, there, there are a lot of theories about that in the, the Bloomberg article that I referenced. The specific reason that they reference is accountability and also, you know, the voting practices.
It can mess with your bond rating because of that?
The, the bond rating is a little bit fuzzier, um, but the cost of government specifically, like the cost of doing the business of government, that, that is, Bloomberg pinpointed that to, to accountability.
Also, if you, I, I mean, I would imagine outreach on our end costs less if there's a newspaper that's also letting the people know, hey, this is what's proposed or what's coming up. So, that's my, I don't know, that was my thought.
Are you building this to be a permanent thing?
We would like to. That's why we're taking our time.
Okay, and the last one, will you be using local people at all?
That, that would be the intent, yes. Like, when, when it comes to, um, especially the editorial structure and the business structure, the idea is that the, the business plan will include at least one, if not two, local people, one, ideally two, one to be the, the editorial, the, the person to manage all of, all of the editorial, be that final word, and then the second to manage ad sales.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, we'll open this up for public comment real quick. No public comment. Okay, do I hear a motion? No public comment. Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item? And the motion will open it up for discussion and comments.
I would move to approve the community grant application in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents as submitted by the CSU Department of Journalism and Media Communication with funding to be provided from the Board of Trustees Discretionary Fund.
Second?
Okay. Um, trustee Teets, you said you had some comments.
I do, yes. So, and I absolutely appreciate the effort and intent behind the request for the discretionary funds. But I personally can't support allocating our board discretionary funds in a journalism project. Um, so journalism research may serve public interest. But so enhancing dialogue, civic education, but in my opinion, it fails a stricter public purpose test because the primary beneficiary is not the public. It's the graduate student and the institution. So the one that would be benefiting is the one that the grad student that's getting paid to do this at this time. Um, there's, from what I saw, two thousand dollars in web development, but the grad student hourly pay is one thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And then there's a fringe benefit for the grad student of seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Um, so I said discretionary funds are meant to serve community through tangible outcomes. It seems like while maybe down the road, this is going to be a tangible item. At this time, I don't see as it, it as a tangible item right now. Um, and honestly, journalism needs to remain independent of government influence or funding. Um, that's my personal opinion. Funding such a project could indirectly create perception of bias and conflict of interest, depending on who sits on the board, who provides additional information, whether it's the town giving you what they would like to have published. Then we enter into another conflict of interest because the town is directing you on what you should be invest, you know, reporting on items such as that. Um, approving this type of request could also set a precedent for future academic and personal projects seeking town funding, uh, making it difficult to apply consistent standards moving forward. I believe discretionary funds should remain focused on programs and partnerships that deliver direct tangible community benefit. And while this is of public interest, I just don't see how it crosses that threshold yet of public product.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, about eight years ago, North Forty News had an office here in Wellington and we had fairly decent coverage, you know, weekly or bi-weekly would come out and we got some, um, I thought fair and unbiased reporting there. Uh, since that has left and since that is no longer there, seems like most of us get our local news from what we read on social media, which I quite frankly, don't believe half of that. So it's nice to have the ability or the potential for having, reporting done on the news events and local happenings and, and those kind of, uh, things that, that our residents would value, uh, in a fair and unbiased measure. So, uh, I'm, I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Moyer? Any comment?
Yes, um, I think the potential here is huge. I really appreciate the presentation. I think that this absolutely provides, um, a benefit to our entire community. It'll bring people together. It'll build community because we'll have a third party who is investing their time and their efforts in reporting accurate, true information about our town and events. Um, I think this has the potential to really shift the culture in our town. Um, and it's just the beginning. Like who knows where this could go. So I think that, uh, it, it's a great project and I really support it. And I think it has huge potential to build trust, um, throughout our whole community.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate your presentation tonight and I, I certainly understand the efforts, uh, here. Certainly, you know, as you eloquently pointed out, Wellington doesn't have a whole lot of, uh, reliable news reporting or these types of things, other than, other than what's, what's on social media and that sort of thing. And that's a big mess as far as that goes. But I, I do have to say, I, I agree with trustee Teets quite a bit in this regard. I mean, the idea that local government or by us providing board discretionary funds for the development of a business plan, A, I'm not sure that, in my opinion, that, that is the intention of the board discretionary fund, right, to develop business plans. But the second thing I would be more concerned about is if we're providing grant funding, uh, the idea that, uh, development of this, that, that somehow we could be influencing independent journalism. And so I think for me, that, that's, that's, I, I would not want to cross that line personally. So I, I don't, that's my comments really. That's it.
Fair play. Um, yeah, I appreciate you coming forward with that presentation. It's a great presentation. Along the lines of trustee Cannon, when the North Forty was rocking and rolling and doing their thing, it was nice. I definitely see a need for this, um, but when it comes to using our board funds to, to roll that, uh, that's, I, I have, I struggle with that. But I definitely see the need and know the needs there. So I'm, I'm very, I'm torn. I'm torn on it for sure. So that's where I'm at. Uh, any further comments from the board? No. Uh, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
No.
Trustee Wigan?
No.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trust, uh, Mayor Proton Mason?
No.
Mayor Shosse?
No.
Mayor Shosse, that motion fails.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it. Um, next up, we have our, or Ms. Clerk, please read the item for item E two, please.
First reading on ordinance, um, blank, blank, dot, uh, sorry, just going to start that one over. First reading on ordinance, blank, blank, dash, twenty twenty-five for adoption of the twenty twenty for international building codes and schedule, schedule a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Cody, verbal present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Um, as was introduced, this is a, a first reading, uh, by way of background information. When we adopt codes by reference and, and whole books, and we've got the books over here on the table, um, we have to do that, um, publicly via a first reading and second reading when we adopt that reference. So this is the first reading. Um, one of the actions tonight would be to schedule a hearing to advance that second reading and have, affect public input. The site is not the public hearing, it's just the introduction of the, um, the volumes that we're proposing to adopt. So also background, um, staff has previously been in front of the board to present kind of the, the, the meat and potatoes of these codes, um, at our August regular meeting. Uh, we give a much more detailed presentation on some of the themes of the, the new codes and the significant changes that would be included in the twenty twenty-four, uh, international, uh, building code adoption process. Um, so I'm not going to go through all those details again tonight. There were no significant changes between then and now. Um, but staff has continued to coordinate with our regional partners, including Laramie County, Safeville and other municipal jurisdictions that are aligning, um, those codes. So we have some consistency within the region. Um, so I won't go over those details, but we do have staff available tonight, including Kelly Dykstra, our building official, and Greg Kimball is here representing, uh, the, um, Wellington Fire Protection District on the fire code side of things, uh, which we've also aligned. So if there are technical questions, we've got the expertise here to answer those, but the intent of my presentation is to not go over those. Um, a couple of things I do want to highlight that were, um, in our August, um, presentation, we had referred, um, the board to a couple of the supplemental codes that were also included in this adoption process. And I wanted to specifically highlight those. This adoption, uh, that's recommended includes all of the twenty twenty-four international, uh, building code books promulgated by the International Code Council. Um, we're also recommending adoption of the Colorado, uh, Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code. That's a requirement of the state and we've included that in this process. We have copies of that available as well. Um, one change that we wanted to highlight at the August meeting, we had recommended that we bring the, um, the twenty twenty-five, uh, Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code back at a later date for, to meet the April one compliance, uh, adoption deadline. We were actually able to work with our fire partners to advance that, and that's in your packet tonight as well. Um, this makes it simpler to keep all the codes in kind of one, uh, hearing process and consideration by, by the town. So we're very grateful to our, our fire partners to help us bring that forward a little sooner than we expected to and keep everything aligned. Um, we are recommending an adoption of the International Fire Code twenty twenty-four edition. Um, most of these codes have local amendments. Most of the local amendments are basically logistics to make sure that town of Wellington is referenced appropriately instead of jurisdiction, which is the generic. These codes are written for across the country and, uh, other countries as well. So a lot of the local amendments are just clarifying the local context. But the International Fire Code does have a lot of specific local amendments to address the needs of our, uh, Wellington Fire Protection District. Historically, the town and the fire district have aligned those codes and we've done so again this year. So the, the same in your ordinance, you see the local amendments that are proposed. Those were coordinated between Wellington Fire and Town Staff and the Fire District is also, uh, advancing plans to adopt that same International Fire Code twenty twenty-four edition. So we're in alignment there and what's proposed in your packet. Um, one other highlight that I wanted to, to briefly mention, um, part of the International Plumbing Code, the IPC, um, we are including a specific local amendment for, uh, prohibition of gray water systems. Um, this was a, a Colorado State, uh, House Bill Action, uh, HB twenty-four thirteen sixty-two. Um, the path on the gray water, uh, which is recycling water from like your, your sink or your, your, um, uh, washing machines for reuse and other applications. A couple of years ago, the state said, well, if we're going to allow this, if you want to do it, you need to opt in. And more recently, they've said, okay, now we're going to allow it. And if you don't want to do it, you have to opt out. Uh, our recommendation is aligned with other Safeville communities, um, and smaller communities across the jurisdiction or across the Northern Colorado region. We are recommending prohibition of that gray water, uh, system. Um, that's included in your ordinance. It's consistent across the Northern Colorado area here. Only Fort Collins is adopting that, uh, as a, it's allowed. The reason for that prohibition is these are pretty new systems. They just aren't widely used just yet. They do require quite a bit of monitoring and, and chemical, uh, treatment to make sure that they're operating and a lot of reporting requirements on the local jurisdiction. So just, they're just not ramped up and ready for widespread application. And we've had no requests for that type of permit in this, in Wellington to date. Um, so we are recommending that prohibition to be in compliance with HB twenty-four thirteen sixty-two satisfies that, that procedural step. Um, so to kind of conclude here, um, as a reminder, this is the first reading. We do have all of the books, um, that we're proposing to adopt by reference available in print copies at the office of the, uh, Town Building Department. Um, we also have digital editions of those that are available as well online. Um, so we are satisfying the first reading requirement. The only action that we, we're happy to answer all any questions, but there is one action that we asked the board to do tonight, and that is to schedule a public hearing, uh, for the second reading and formal consideration of the code adoption process. Based on timelines, staff is recommending that that public hearing be scheduled for November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I'm happy to stand for any questions. And again, we have some subject matter experts here if you have more detailed questions about the codes themselves.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board on this item? Trustee Cannon?
Thank you for presentation there, Mr. Bird. Um, you mentioned the gray water system and I believe at a, at a recent meeting, I talked about, I referred to it as a purple water system. It's the same thing where you recycle your, your gray water, uh, into your black tanks and so forth. And the reason I brought that up is I, I believe that, that by recycling this water, especially if we go to an alternative water source that we're looking into and using that water to extinction, um, um, that we would get better bang for our, our dollars if we could find a way to recycle at least a portion of that, of that, uh, of that water. So my question is, if you build a prohibition, which is, I'm assuming that satisfies the opting out portion of that, can you opt back in at a future time?
Yes, we, we could. And so just for clarity's sake, the, the prohibition or the opt-out is, is was phrased, um, is relative to the, the building code requirements. So for new construction homes or remodels of existing homes, we're recommending that that be prohibited. We can always come back and amend this code to allow it. It would, it has some other compliance steps. When you allow it, you have to meet certain criteria. You have to have some measures in place and you have to have reporting requirements established. Um, but it is doable to change that in the future upon direction and, and those resources. But I do also want to clarify that, that the, some of the water source information that was mentioned by trustee Cannon, this prohibition does not apply to municipal reuse of, or of water recycling that might be part of a larger municipal project. This is relative to the building code portion.
Thank you for that clarification. Trustee Moyer, you have any question? Comments?
No questions.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll now open this item up for public comment. Oh, he said, oh, go for it. Sorry. I thought you said you were good.
Sure that we set it up for a public meeting? Okay. That will be under process.
You're good. Thank you, sir. Okay, we will, uh, now open this up for public comment. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Do I hear a motion on this item? Bring it forward to a date specified of November twelfth?
I, I move to establish November twelfth, twenty twenty-five as the date for a public hearing to consider adoption of the twenty twenty-four International Building Codes with local amendments and the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code and the twenty twenty-five State of Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code. Second.
All right. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Uh, actually, any final comments?
No, thank you for bringing all the information before. It helped answer a lot of questions. It made this a lot quicker. I appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
And there's no way we can opt out of any of this. We have to abide by it, correct?
This is pretty broad. Um, there's a, there's a quite a few statutory requirements for energy. Um, the compliance with either opting in or opting out of the gray water is something that we have to do. The twenty twenty-five Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code is a requirement that we have to satisfy. The Model Electric Ready, Solar Ready Code is something we have to satisfy. Um, so most of those are required. Um, we are recommending adoption of the newer, uh, twenty twenty-four codes, um, in alignment with the rest of the community. But it's not a requirement of the town that we have to do that, but it is highly recommended for consistency. And these, the codes are usually, I mean, they're generated to improve safety, to improve building practices, um, over time. So we are recommending these, but there are some things that are not required. We could certainly provide more details if that, if you want to further discuss that.
Okay. Yeah, like I'd mentioned to you earlier, I mean, the codes are great. Most of the upgrades are fantastic for public, you know, safety and all that, but it does add cost to construction. So it's kind of amazing that we're all about affordable housing now, but this is going to increase the cost. But I think we have to do it. Thank you.
Trustee?
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. Um, on to reports. Uh, Dan Sappi is the town attorney.
I'll make it quick. Um, y'all received my letter yesterday, um, effective immediately after the next board meeting, which will be October twenty-ninth. Um, Pooter Legal Advisors is resigning as town attorney for the town of Wellington. It's been wonderful working with the board and with staff here. Um, I'll continue to be a big fan of Wellington football. But, uh, if you have any questions for me, in the meantime, let me know. I think, um, we've been working together with mayor and with, uh, the town administrator on a good succession plan, at least on an interim basis. And I, I think it'll serve the town well, um, to go out for a, a bid in the future for town attorney. I think it's been, I don't know, the town's ever done it. And it's certainly been at least thirty to forty years since the town has had an open bid for town attorney.
Yeah.
Um, so I, so I So I, so I think that's, it's a good thing for the town and I think it would be good to get some, some new blood in here. And I wish the town well and I'll continue working for you in the way I can. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Then we have Ms. Garcia, the town administrator.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. So today I attended a BizWest CEO roundtable, which was a representation of municipalities across Northern Colorado, everything from Greeley and Fort Collins to Timneth, Severance, Windsor, Wellington. And it was interesting that the issues discussed included things that we've all talked about, such as the economy, infrastructure costs, development in the region, delay of grant funding, water issues such as NISP and delaying of 2026 projects due to revenue constraints. Which brings me to the budget that we presented a little bit earlier today. The leadership team did a great deal of reductions totaling $492,000 in the general fund and $860,000 across all funds. So I want to make sure that you're cognizant of, of the work that has been done. And I appreciate that, you know, you're, you're like, great job, good job, everybody. But I want to make sure that you've heard, you know, the work that's gone into that and some of the projects that we're delaying in order to make this happen. So one of the things I wanted to make sure and understand that, you know, right now, the projected fund balance for general fund operations is a negative $331,000. We don't like to spend into fund balance for operations, especially general fund. But sometimes you have to do that and I understand that. And so we've tried to get really close. But I want to make sure that you're all in agreement with moving forward with home rule, which is something that is exciting and interesting, but understand the cost of that. The discretionary funds or discretionary fund of 25,000, hold on. The hardship utility grant of 25,000 and the Cleveland Avenue Business Support of 25,000. So that's another $75,000 that we haven't touched. We haven't gone into any of the board priority items and tried to make any cuts. We've made our, our cuts or as Nick likes to call them refinements on, on our own projects. The LCSO contract is an increase of 132,611, which we don't have any control over. And I understand they're going through their own budget process and trying to make reductions right now, such as right now, they're not doing any training, specific training, things like that, if I remember right. So, and all, all of those items I just mentioned is 332,611. So I just want to make sure you're all comfortable with us moving forward with that. We can make adjustments. If you ask us to make other refinements, we can. I, I don't know where else we can in general fund. We've really just made, we're, we're down to bare bones. But still understanding, we need to have a vision for the future. So that's why we've delayed some projects as opposed to just not doing them. We're delaying projects for a year because we still need to have a vision for the future of Wellington and we're not going to be in this place forever. We do, we would like some direction on the park fund. We're seeking direction on the batting cages. They generate about $2,000 to $2,500 in revenue and the expenditure is at least $11,000 each year. So we're wondering if a temporary closure of the batting cages might be helpful. I mean, the parks fund could certainly use some help, but I know that that's a service that, that the community enjoys and appreciates, but it's just not, it costs us way more than, way more to operate than we will ever receive in revenues.
Patty, do you want feedback right now from us?
We would love some. I would love that.
As far as the batting cages go on just my side of things, I would love to keep because we have such limited access for the community when it comes to our youth. Could we say that our board discretionary fund, we could decrease it by the amount of what that cost is to keep it operational? Would that be something the board would be in agreement with to say, I want to see the youth because it's kind of serving the youth without, you know, discretionary funds is meant to serve the people.
Can I provide a little bit more insight?
Oh, yeah.
The $11,000 is just what the budget line is. If you look at just hard costs on an annual basis, our salary for seasonals, because we have to have a seasonal employee there to give out the tokens for everybody that pays to come in. Just last year, or this year, excuse me, since they're closed, $9,574 in seasonal. We also spent approximately, it's really hard to parcel out exactly how much we're using in electricity because the ball field lights and the cage are all tied into the same. As we know, rates increase through the evenings. Sometimes they're on together. So we, we assume that about 29% of the overall usage when the cages are open, that come through that Excel bill are from the cages. That would be about $5,426 that we're spending on just electricity to keep those open. So, so total, we're looking at with, with the maintenance, which is about 7,500 this year. We just got our final estimate for closing the cages, which would take that 11,000 budget line to pretty close to $8,000. We're looking at about $22,000 just of hard costs. That doesn't incorporate any time for hiring and training the staff that we have, maintaining the area in and around the cages. And then just to throw some numbers out there, they're 10 years old. I know we're going through the Parks and Rec master plan right now, so we're kind of holding off on some capital ideas. But estimated cost of things that could be done in the next five to 10 years should be done and will need to be done for safety could be upwards of like $146,000. And some of that stuff is just new netting. We start, last year was the first year we had to replace an entire one of the ball machines to get those each one replaced. It's about eight grand plus the cost to have it put in. So if we did one last year, we're looking probably every other year now that they're hitting their 10 to 15 year mark. So the cost isn't just the $11,000 for the budget line. I'm just saying, I, I want to put context to all of this. I'm not up here advocating to shut them down. I'm just saying on, on average, over the last four years, the revenue has been $3,600. And on average, we're spending right at about that 22,000 just on hard costs without any large failures.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm still willing to sacrifice the 25,000 in board discretionary fund to make sure that we have something for the youth available. There's not a lot.
Trustee Moore?
Yeah. I mean, I feel conflicted about quite a few things here. I feel conflicted about approving a position that we all deemed was necessary and then pulling back on that. Speaking to Park staff, I feel really conflicted when we look at, you know, our administrator just said, you know, we need to look towards the future. We're not going to be in this time. Like we're in this time right now, but it's not going to be like this forever. I really do feel conflicted and I know this is an unpopular position, but about spending this amount of money on home rule at this time. If we think about what we could do with those funds, we could solve the batting cage problem. And I, I do think that that is important. I'd love to know like how many people that fund revenue means are using it. And I agree with trustee Teetz in that we don't offer a lot for our youth right now. And why would we take away something that we know is being used? I don't feel good about that. I would love to find the money to keep those open wherever we can. And I don't feel great about our utility grant amount when we know that we spent more than that. And we know that people are hurting right now. Why would we decrease it? So I find when I look at this and the changes that were made to the budget, that all of these problems could be solved with the home rule money. And all that would mean would be delaying that decision a year and we can come back to it next year. I think we do need in some cases to think about what we have to do right now. We are all about planning for the future and that is our board's goal and we are good at it. But right now our community needs certain things and we have the funds sitting in front of us to do them. And I think it's our responsibility to do them.
Thank you. Do you have something more to say?
No, I was just gonna, I do have something to add, but I, I can find out specifically how many attendees we have and I can report that back to the board. I just got the monetary for revenue and expenditures. Well, I do want to add real quick is that the money that we're spending, it is in the budget. It's almost the same year after year after year, all the way back to 2021. And that was an odd year because we were kind of in the midst of COVID. So they were kind of open and shut down, hard to find employees. But we have started to investigate into what it would look like monetarily and also staff time wise to potentially add automated machines where you would use a credit card or cash. It's still suggested that you have an employee there because the cages do go down, balls get stuck, all that stuff. So you need someone to be there. But the idea could potentially be that during the hours of operation, specifically, you know, that we have Park staff, they could call our, the office or I'll call them, we could send someone over there. So we wouldn't have to staff that like we currently do to have someone in the office. It would just be after the hours, you know, five o'clock till 10, when they shut off during the summer. It's something to think about. I can present those numbers. I, this isn't like a huge, we need to do this now, but it is a large cost that's coming out of the park fund and it's just a way to look in the future. If, if you look at these numbers, you know, $160,000 potentially that we need of upgrades and deferred maintenance is, is a lot to think about. So just kind of wanted to present that stuff.
Can I just say real quick, sorry, Mr. Cooksey, that those numbers, while they'd be great to have, I don't actually need because they're not going to change the way that I feel. And also I think that we are so proud of our football team and we are so invested in the sports of our youth that providing an opportunity for them to be able to practice is really important.
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Moore. Yeah. Well, yeah, baseball's, I mean, I'm super biased on this. It's America's sport. Okay?
I'm with you.
Anybody can become pro in baseball and you see a lot of small town people make it happen. And the last thing I'm going to do is shut down batting cages. So.
So I'm just, my job is to provide you options.
Yeah.
And that's sort of, and then that's what I'm doing.
I mean, I'm, I'm on board to postpone home rule. I really am. Yeah, trustee Cannon.
Okay. Last year we postponed home rule. You know, there's always going to be priorities and money is going to be tight and there's always going to be, well, let's just fix this that we've got going on right now. And the further down the road you kick the option for home rule, which can bring, number one, we know about the protections it can bring from the, from the excess liberal agenda coming out of Denver. But also the ability to us, to us to use home rule to help with revenue generation through economic development and so forth like that. If we keep kicking that down the road, next year we're going to be in the same boat. If we'd have done this last year, then who knows if we were in the same boat this year or the year after, the year after. It does take time to get economic development up and rolling. But if you just never take that step to make that happen, I think we're just cutting our own throat. I'm a hundred percent behind taking the board discretionary fund and putting that toward other projects. And first of all, I want to, I also want to compliment staff for everything they've done because I understand the struggles it goes through when you have board priorities, when you have departmental priorities, when you have equipment that's failing, that needs to be replaced, when there's priorities, when you have plans and so forth. And making those cuts is, is, is difficult. And I applaud staff for everything they've done to, to present this budget as it was presented tonight. But I don't believe putting off home rule is the way to go. I think that home rule is our, is a way for us to open up opportunities for us so that we're not facing this every year for the next 20, 30 years. We need to find a way to, to make an investment in our future right now. And that's why I'm, I'm against removing the home rule option.
Thank you for that. Do you have anything, trustee Wigan?
I agree with that. I mean, we definitely need to protect the batting cages, but if there's any way possible, I would definitely like to see home rule go. Continue on.
So you'd be in favor of the discretionary fund?
Absolutely.
Okay. Trustee Moore, you raised your hand again or did you forget to lower it?
I raised it again. I just, no, I raised it again. I just want to remind everybody that we did approve a position to work on economic development. And that is in motion and like going to happen. So it could be that we give that person a chance to work on that for a year. Postpone home rule one last time and take care of these things. Yes, we're always going to have something on fire, but we won't always have the people that we're going to have next year. So it's just something to consider. I think it's a huge chunk of what our spending is going to be. And it would allow for all of these issues to be solved. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
I had a question. Patty, didn't you put the hiring freeze on that position?
No, not, that was already, it was already hired.
Oh.
The position and it, the person starts next week. So the hiring freeze was two positions in, in, in Public Works and then the one for the Parks Technician. And that is something we'll bring back to you in probably August. We'll have it, by August, we'll have June financials will be six months through the year. We'll have an idea of what our revenues are and can we, you know, fill those positions. So those will come back to you just to either as a report or as a request for budget amendment to add them back in.
Thank you.
Also, there's no guarantee that home rule passes. So this is a gamble.
Correct. Mayor Pretten?
Well, let's see. I, I, I also do not want to see batting cages closed. However, Mr. Cooksey, I would like to see participation numbers as far as that goes on. That's, that's how I operate about things. And if two people are using it, then eh, kind of hard to justify, right? So we'll see. I, I'd like to hear those numbers. I, I also agree with trustee Cannon that we, I believe we do need to budget for home rule. I think it's our responsibility, especially for what the future board is going to be. If that is something that they want to pursue, you know, full throttle, that money's going to need to be there. Now, obviously we don't know who those folks are going to be at this time, but I think it's important that we keep some of that money there. I, I would, I would encourage us to take some of that money out of the board discretionary fund and fund the batting cages as much as we can in that regard. I don't know if there's. Yeah, I think that's.
Other items. I apologize. I heard batting cages and my brain just kind of hyper focused on the batting cages aspect. Okay.
Well, I, I did want to, I did want to highlight just a couple of things. Wasn't it, last year we put $12,500 for the hug grant? And we increased it to $25,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
I just want to be sure about that. Okay.
Yes, it's, yes, it's doubled from last year.
Okay. We also do not have the rate presentation back yet or know how that's going to affect things either. Not to say, obviously that hug grant is going to have to remain there, you know, but I'm just not, I, I'm not in a real good spot to give some, some good direction here. I do think we should take some out of the discretionary fund though and make sure that the cages stay open.
Okay. So we can, we can get you the, those numbers, participation numbers. And I know it's not on our future meetings agenda, but perhaps we can bring something back for you on November 12th or even, Nick, where are you? Come up here. I almost messed up his schedule. So I would like a chant, an opportunity for you all. Now that we've talked about this a little bit, I want the opportunity for you all to really think about it. Go through those. If you need printed copies of those budgets, Nick is happy to print those for you. We'll have somebody in his office to do that for you. You can pick them up at town hall. Sometimes it's easier to look at those spreadsheets in hard copy and to, to make your notes and things like that. But perhaps we can come back either October 28th or the 12th, because that would be after budget bonanza. The 28th to, to see what your thoughts are. You can provide us some feedback. You comfortable with that? Would that be all right with you all? Okay. All right. So we'll do that. If you have any questions in the meantime, please feel free to reach out to myself or Nick right away. And we will, if we don't have the answers, we will certainly look for them and, and, and get responses to you all and then respond to the entire board. So you're all hearing and knowing what everybody's asking. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect.
Do you mind emailing the list that you went over for us to look at the other options for?
They were on the overview. So the first, there's a bottom left part that says for board consideration. So they are in the packet. So, they are in the packet. And I would be happy to email just that PDF to the board as well, if that would be helpful.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any board reports? Trustee Cannon?
Yes, this Friday, I'll be attending the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee. This is our first meeting in several months. I always enjoy going to these meetings and hearing about what, what the legislature is proposing, but also what other communities are proposing for future legislation. So, I'll be going there on Friday. Again, I want to just reiterate my appreciation for staff for everything that they're doing. You know, budgets are always difficult. We have these needs. We have these wants. We have these desires. And then, and then we have the reality of the, the revenues that, that come in. You know, eight years ago, the town talked about home rule. And we had a, a work session with the Board of Trustees. It didn't go anywhere. And we had an economic developer that was making some good progress for the town. But that didn't go anywhere either. It's hard to, to entice, especially in, in today's world where people are doing more shopping online. You know, people travel doing from work and they stop on the way and so forth. But the basic necessities of, of what our residents need for their household, for their families and so forth, we just don't provide that here. And if we can find a way to provide that, the revenues will increase. We already know about the $114 million worth of sales, which is being leaked to other communities. That's $11 million in sales tax revenue that we don't receive. But Fort Collins is getting it. Timneth is getting it. Other communities are getting that money. They're building parks. They're building swimming pools. They're building, their, their streets look good. You know, they're hiring more people. They're expanding their opportunities. And meanwhile, we're seeing what can happen when revenues start to dry up as we continue to expand. And my fear is that if we're not planning for the future, for the future growth, because we've got what, a couple thousand more homes already on the books between Saddleback and, and Darren Robertson's new development. You know, that's, that's going to be another three or 4,000 people coming in. And without a revenue stream to support that added population, you know, we're going to be doing more than cutting, you know, board discretionary funds in future budgets. We'll be talking about layoffs and we'll be talking about, you know, it's time to, you know, lock up a few parks or shut down library operations. And you start making those decisions about what's essential and what's not essential. Everything that we do is essential. And I think it's time, and the reason I'm, I'm so adamant about, about this is it's time that we start planning for that future, for that financial stability and sustainability for our town to provide the goods and services that our town and our residents require. So, that's why I'm very strongly committed to, to home rule. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other board reports? Trustee Teetz?
I just want to thank you to all of town staff as far as the budget presentation goes. I know that there was a lot changed. I was kind of taken agos because typically I'm always the one that's asking where can we save money. And so, I was very surprised when I saw this budget presentation come out and a lot of the things that you guys requested that we were unanimously in agreement about and could support was kind of removed off of that budget this go round when we were reviewing it. So, I'm grateful and I understand that it, it's a loss when you look at not having those extra employees or having those extra dollars to fund something that's exceedingly important. So, I am grateful for what you guys have done as far as the budget goes. I would like to see some of the, that stuff again revisited through an amendment later that has been adjusted. The information that was given to us was very valid on every single one of your guys' hires, on why it was important and why it needed to be supported. So, and if I can't find an argument, that's, you know, one of my things. I'm always the devil's advocate on saving money. So, I do look forward to hearing more about the items and discussions on what we can do to supplement elsewhere and if need be, need to have discussions on what we need to possibly give up if, so we can still support the needs of our community. So, other than that, no, I don't have anything else.
Mayor Pretten, nothing? Just town staff. I mean, you guys work hard. You're here right now. Your families have probably already had dinner. Who knows what's going on? We volunteered to be up here. This is your guys' job and I just appreciate the time you guys took and always take to come to these meetings. So, thank you very much. And thank you for presenting us with a budget that was thoughtfully done and presented to us. So, I appreciate that, each and every one of you. All right. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Sorry, my mic.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Or all in favor, actually. We don't need to do that.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I now adjourn the regular meeting time being 7:46 PM.